Gets all quiet, the pressure is on to call the meeting on time. I now call the August 15th, 2017 regular council meeting to order. Would council members please denote your presence by depressing your yes switch?
All council members are present.
Council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. I see some pretty good-looking kids there that might want to do the pledge of allegiance. What do you think, all the way up here with me? So that we can get pictures and you can lead the pledge? Come on, guys, let's do this. I don't see any other kids I'm leaving out, right?
Okay, just line up up here, guys. You gotta point towards the flag and do your thing.
Okay, you guys ready? Who's gonna start us? Okay, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice, okay.
Nice work, thank you.
You guys are a good-looking group. I wonder who you're related to here? You guys are some hot stars. Now, you guys don't want to stay and help me run the meeting, do you? The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the August 1st, 2017 regular council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on August 14th, 2017.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Corrections. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the August 15th, 2017 bills and claims as audited by City Manager Napier.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Walsh. Abstentions. Please cast your vote. Little more muscle over there, Dallas.
I was all nervous because Mr. Wingert is here and he's a former city council person.
He watches us every night, he told me. Please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Please read the consent agenda title.
Established September 5th, 2017 as the public hearing date for consideration of the rezoning of 207 South Minnesota Avenue. Remar to One Unit Residential to C2 General Business.
The Chair would entertain a motion to by minute action establish the public hearing date just read.
Still moved.
Moved by Councilman Morgan, seconded by Councilman Huckabee. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Please read the consent ordinance on second reading by title only.
Ordinance approving the vacation of a portion of an alley public right-of-way south of West Yellowstone Highway between South David Street and South Ash Street.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading the consent ordinance just read.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Powell, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 7A1, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Gear Fabrication Services for the Casper Event Center Hairpin Rails Installation Project. Item 7A2, a resolution authorizing a contract for professional services with GSG Architecture for Design and Construction Administration Services for the new Casper Fire Station Number Five. Item 7A3, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a WWDC grant agreement for the CY Booster Station Replacement Project. Item 7A4, a resolution authorizing a lease agreement with Casper Coyotes Junior Hockey LLC for use of the Casper Ice Arena. Item 7A5, a resolution authorizing a lease agreement with the Casper Amateur Hockey Club for use of the Casper Ice Arena. Item 7A6, a resolution authorizing a memorandum of agreement with the Wyoming Department of Transportation and right-of-way easement with the Transportation Commission of Wyoming for signal improvements at the intersection of West 13th Street and Southwest Wyoming Boulevard. Item 7A7, a resolution rescinding Resolution 14-149 and establishing fees for the use of Hogodon Basin Ski Area. Item 7A8, a resolution rescinding Resolution Number 1786, approval of the execution of Agreement with Full Contract Contact Concrete LLC for the 2017 Pedestrian Pathways Project. Item 7A9, a resolution authorizing change order number four with GH Phipps Construction of Wyoming for a price increase and time extension for the Hogodon Lodge. Item 7A10, a resolution authorizing the purchase of one pair transit bus for use in the city's transit system from Lewis Bus Group to purchase two additional identical vehicles over the next four years. Item 7A11, a resolution approving the vacation and replat of Lot 1 of the Trifectaion Edition and Lot 2 of the Trifectaion Edition Number Two as the Vistoff Edition to the City of Casper. Item 7A12, a resolution authorizing acceptance of grant funds from the State of Wyoming Office of the Attorney General Division of Victim Services. Item 7A13, a resolution authorizing Amendment Number One of the Contract with National Benefit Services LLC for the provision of Flexible Spending Benefit Plan Administration Services.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Morgan, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Abstentions or nay votes. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Please read the consent minute action title.
Authorizing the appointment of new members Jennifer True and Christopher Murray to the Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda item just read.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Powell, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Please cast your vote. I was nowhere near the no button, just for the record.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Thank you. Now's the time, we'd invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we ask the following. We're gonna need your name and address. We won't respond to personnel matters, we refer those to the City Manager. Some of your questions may not be responded to, and please keep your presentation to five minutes. Whoever would like to speak, come on down. Good evening.
Good evening. Tasha Blackburn, 2442 Shumway Street. I have a few questions I'd like clarified, Councilman Morgan.
And actually, if you'll just direct them to me, that way we keep it nice and simple.
When it was mentioned that you would like breathalyzers placed at bars, what was the intent message? If your intent was to say that bar patrons are getting too drunk in Casper, why would you state the place that you learned about it was from listening to at the sexual assault panel, as that is irrelevant to the point being which is Casper's drinking problem? I applaud you trying to think of ways to help the issues that surround the alcohol problem here. However, by stating you learned about at the sexual assault panel from professionals that were speaking on the topic of sexual assault, it insinuates that alcohol is the reason behind the sexual assaults happening. Alcohol may be a contributing factor, however, it is not the only reason that contributes to sexual assault. I was not drinking nor was I at a bar when I was sexually assaulted. In fact, I was taking care of my well-being, sorry, by seeing my gynecologist at an office exam. If you truly want to help sexual assault victims, start by educating the community. Do not place blame on alcohol and bar owners. Do not place blame on what the victim was wearing or doing for the sexual assault to occur. In fact, place blame where it belongs, on the offender that committed the crime. According to the social media jury, I was seeking attention and money. I am yet to see any of the social media jury attend any of the hearings nor council meetings, nor were they in my exam room when I was assaulted. It is difficult enough to come forward and tell someone what happened to you out of fear that they may not believe you, let alone the fact that sexual assault is still taboo in today's age, that most people will most often resort to blaming you somehow for the crime that was committed, or denying it ever happened at all. If someone comes to you and tells you something happened to them, the first step in helping them is to just listen to them without creating an opinion and just tell them that you support them. So if you want to help sexual assault victims, start by educating the community, not by placing breathalyzers at bars, and certainly not by giving the offender an excuse to his or actions, instead offer a lending ear to someone that felt that they can trust you enough to confide in you. I also have a question for Mr. Pacheco, which is, you had discussed about starting a sexual assault group back in September of last year, and I haven't heard anything since then, and so I was just curious what you have come up with.
So what we might do, folks, is we may not answer your questions right now. Let's let all the speakers talk, and then maybe at the very end of the meeting, council can kind of summarize where they're at, what their opinions were, what their intentions were, and just simplify it that way. But we're not ignoring you, I promise. Okay, thanks for coming up.
Good evening.
My name's Michael McDaniel. I live at 3488 Plateau in Casper, 82601, and I too would like to briefly address the issue of sexual assault and its prevalence in our city. I prepared a statement for this, so I'm gonna read it. It has come to my intention that members of the council and the community have been aiming at addressing the issue of sexual assault in our community. There seems to be a divide as to the root cause or the probable cause of sexual assault and rape that also has led to a divide in how to most effectively combat sexual assault. Throughout the past year, I've listened to victims of sexual assault, their allies as well, as those who blame the victims and find reasons as to why sexual assault and rape occurs and at such high frequencies. To those that seem to be a bit confused, I'd like to state this: Sexual assault and rape are violent crimes in which the perpetrator aims to exert control over another individual. In no instance does the way in which somebody dresses, their level of intoxication, nor any other behavior prompt sexual assault. The condition of intoxication of the perpetrator does not excuse them for their behavior either. I understand that it's probably difficult to legislate this problem, so I've got a few things that you might be able to work on. I say, end the preconceived notion that sexual assault and rape have any cause other than the perpetrator committing a violent act. Stop victim blaming. I cannot think of any other crime that can be committed in which it would be acceptable to pass the buck onto anyone or any other thing than the person that committed the crime itself. Alcohol does not sexually assault, nor does it rape people. Rapist rape people, period. Promote and end a rape culture. As members of the city council, you all have the ability to set an example. Instead of finding solutions outside of the root cause, such as intoxication level, look at the actual root cause and address it. Stand with the victims and denounce all perpetrators as they are, regardless of age, gender, skin color, or socioeconomic status. Above all, listen to the victims. As most victims of sexual assault are women, and most perpetrators are white males, it is essential that males stand against sexual assault and rape as allies to the most vulnerable and affected people, as opposed to being proponents of cultures in which the behavior is accepted and standardized. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else in the audience would like to speak with council? Go quick, Mr. Steensland will jump right in there, because I didn't return his phone call earlier this week either. I promise I'll return your call. I really will. And I'll give you my new phone number. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. All right. Hello, my name is Lucas Cogdill, and I live at 3431 Carmel Drive. And I don't want to talk about sexual assault tonight. I want to talk about passion. And I want to begin this conversation by acknowledging and supporting, cheerleading, the Passion Councilwoman Huckabee has shown combating this critical issue in our community, so thank you, Councilwoman. Passion is a great thing. It's one of our strongest emotions and can lead to some truly fantastic stuff. If you would, take a moment and think about someone you know who is truly passionate about something and how wonderful that is. Maybe you can think about someone who's passionate about their job, maybe it's a hobby, maybe it's being a parent. When someone is passionate about something, that person's endeavors and that passion can border on art, it can be artistic. In a similar fashion, I'm sorry, so passion is an emotion, a truly great emotion. However, we all know emotions uncontrolled can be dangerous. For example, love can lead to obsession, anger, uncontrolled will lead to hate. These aren't great things even though they have roots in great things. In a similar fashion, I would argue that unbridled passion is not a great thing, like love leading to obsession and anger leading to hate. When left unchecked, unbridled passion quickly and easily can fall into zealousness. And when one is responding in a zealous manner, they no longer hear what is being said, they hear what their own emotions, biases, and prejudices tell them to hear. A zealous person does not remain calm or civil even when prompted by others. They refuse to listen to reason and become completely incapable of showing introspection or restraint, and instead drive forward with feelings of righteousness where likely no righteousness may actually be warranted. My personal opinion is that this is what occurred at the last council meeting. An individual's passion became unbridled and then slipped into zealousness. That zealousness led this individual to make inappropriate comments, conflate statements, be inappropriately critical and level unwarranted accusations at another council member. Now, if Councilman Morgan had come out and said emphatically that rape was a direct result of alcohol consumption, there would be no controversy. There would be no social media debates, I wouldn't be here discussing this issue. None of us would be here, and that includes Councilman Morgan. Because if he had made that statement, he probably wouldn't have a friend in the world right now. But that's not what happened, and that's not what Councilman Morgan said, and therein lies the reason that I'm here. I'm here now to help defend an innocent council member against another council person and members of the public who are running with emotions that surpass unbridled passion and fall into the dangerous realm of zealotry. They have no interest in what was actually said at the last meeting. When presented with audio, they refuse to listen. When shown a transcript, they refuse to read. That is because they are not interested in what actually transpired, but only what their zealousness indicates the situation was. I'm going to co-opt an analogy I read on social media that I think puts the situation in a better light. Let's say for the sake of argument that our city was facing a high rate of sexual assaults on its citizenry who found themselves in dark alleys late at night. Councilman Morgan makes a statement highlighting this fact and indicates that maybe as part of combating this problem, the city could consider lights in alleyways, thereby helping combat against some of these opportunistic predators. Now, nowhere does that suggestion imply that dark alleys are responsible for rape. Nowhere does it imply that it's a citizen's fault for finding themselves in a dark alley late at night. It's only a statement that says, as part of combating this complicated problem, maybe we should consider casting some light in those alleys as well. Now, is that a great idea? I couldn't tell you, because that conversation was shut down by another council member. A single council member decided at her sole discretion what another member could and could not say at a meeting. Moreover, in their zealousness, this council member took it upon themselves to grossly twist words and unprofessionally levy horrific implications. I don't appreciate a council member who has left their passion unchecked and slipped into zealotry, who refuses to listen to the mayor of her city when advised to show restraint, who conflates the statements of someone trying to help through open dialogue and instead shuts down conversation. A council member who feels through her zealotry that she is the one, I'm sorry, a council member who feels through her zealotry that she alone is the one who can speak on a topic when this is an issue that faces the community on the whole. Emotions are okay, and everybody is entitled to them. What these uncontrolled emotions have led to is not okay. Emotions uncontrolled are not appropriate for council members. We absolutely cannot have council members conducting themselves in an uncontrolled manner. It's destructive and regressive. That's not leadership. I offer no rebuke to Councilwoman Huckabee in regard to her feelings that alcohol doesn't cause rape. I think we all acknowledge that fact, but that was never what was at issue. What's at issue is her behavior as a council member and the manner in which she conducted herself and treated a fellow council member. In this circumstance, I personally found said behavior completely inappropriate and worthy of the reprimand. Thank you for your time.
Who else would like to visit with council? And if everyone can just make sure to direct everything my direction, that's perfect. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Dennis Steensland, 533 South Washington. You'd think after two years I'd know what time the council meeting starts. Anyway, I obviously missed out on a lot of important stuff tonight. I do have some comments on the last work session, and that's what I'm gonna address tonight. On the positive side, I had a bad experience with a dog and a very good experience with Metro Animal Control. Two people that helped out very much were Hope Doyle and Tori Walsh. Did a very nice job, handled it perfectly, was a bad experience turned good. The next part of that was I received a nice get well card from the City Manager's office via Liz Becker, and it came at just the right time to spark me up. So, anyway, that's a good part of my comments tonight. I sure wish I would have heard more about what went on earlier, but I don't, so. The downtown, from the work session, downtown sidewalk proposal, I thought it was a good piece of business to put that off till the parking deal was done. I do think some of the guidelines are a little overboard, but anyway, we've got a year to deal with that, I guess. That's the parking cafe issue. Councilman Laird brought up Robert's Rules of Order as far as the number of votes on that one, I think it was. I would like to know how that worked out. And along that same line, it appears to me like there's more council members missing, more meetings regularly. Parkway parking was the other one you've discussed and discussed and discussed. To me, you've spent way too much time on that already. Just enforce the rules that you have, which Councilman Laird suggested, and you don't have to look very far to find situations that could be ticketed. The idea of having a 10-day work or a reply session, to me, is what ruins the whole thing. Give them a ticket, if they don't correct it, give them another ticket that's more restrictive, I guess. 10 days, it's like in the summer trying to get weeds picked up in your neighborhood. By the time they get it done, the summer's over, you've had to look at it all summer. My other note says, "Street parking is out of line." You don't have to look very far to find street parking offenses. This is the first time I've come to one of these with notes, so I'm hitting all of them in one. The last one is sole source purchasing, that I understand is not supposed to be the rule of thumb, and it seems like it's becoming more of the rule of thumb. That's all my complaints for this meeting.
You have one positive.
It was? I thought the first two were positive, the rest were negative. Thank you for your time.
I can at least respond to one, with the downtown restaurant parking. We will see that again with a more comprehensive visual approach on what that's gonna look like, so it's not done yet.
But it's eight months out, right?
No.
No?
I suspect we'll...
I thought it was out until this parking structure survey was done.
We want to see the parking survey for sure, but I think that we're gonna have a little bit more of a comprehensive plan that's being developed as we speak. I guess a comprehensive plan of exterior, outdoor restaurant seating that gives us a better idea of what the entire downtown would look like, should that become an opportunity for everyone.
I see. I think it's one man's problem that he didn't plan far enough ahead, and now he's thrown it on the city to solve that problem for him in a quicker fashion. I think a year out from now would be plenty of time to deal with that issue. That's just my feel on that one. I didn't realize you were gonna move it forward.
Not necessarily move anything forward, but at least present a bit more of an overall picture, which is what I certainly need to even grasp the idea.
I see. It was kinda interesting that Carter's first proposal was kinda run into rough waters. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak to council?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh my god, there are instructions. My name is Jane Ifland, spelled I-F like Frank, L-A-N-D like David. My address is 406 East 8th Street. What I have to say today might take 15 to 30 seconds more than five minutes, and I would ask your indulgence. I've been asked to speak for my sisters behind me and others not able to be here tonight in order to streamline the comment process. The diversity of our city council is a great strength of this body. Each of you draws on myriad strengths and resources to the benefit of our city, and we appreciate the exercise of your skills, talents, and judgment on our behalf. That said, we're concerned about the level of interpersonal drama we see consuming your time and energy, and we wonder whether this is in the best interest of our city. There is no good time for mud throwing and feuding within our council, and there could be no worse time than this for such behavior. We have brought you serious problems. Problems that affect each of us, others who have not yet found the strength to come forward, and the victims and survivors of the future. The scale of these problems is such that appropriate impact must come largely from government, meaning you. Many, if not most, Americans lack a full understanding of the complex of issues called sexual assault. Ignorance on this topic is common. You, however, must be fully educated on this topic in order to bring about the improvements we need to see, and we need you to be fully open to that education. One of your number, Ms. Huckabee, is in a unique position to assist the council in achieving both the compassionate understanding and the operational knowledge you need to confront this complex of problems effectively. Her passion for sexual assault victims is well-known and much appreciated. We are all aware that she generally is fully able to sustain a diplomatic and professional approach to this charged issue. Paradoxically, her personal experience, which offers so much depth to the council's consideration, makes her, along with all our sister survivors, vulnerable to an exceptional level of anguish when memories of trauma are surfaced and relived. Considering the recent high-profile sexual assault allegation, sexual assault victims have been on an emotional roller coaster. Emotions are running high as a result of vicious social media comments and the rampant victim blaming within our community. Often, we feel as if what is done to one of us is done to all of us. This has rocked us to our core. Comments made during a work session would have triggered Ms. Huckabee's response from every single one of us. We, your constituents, require that you show her the same compassion and empathy any one of us should be able to expect in a public setting. Mr. Morgan's comment conflating alcohol consumption and rape reflected a lack of information about sexual assault, and Ms. Huckabee was correct, if not diplomatic, in pointing this out. Rape is not caused by alcohol, dress, time of day, location, manner, or mean. Rape is caused by rapists. Sexual assault is the fault of criminals, not victims. Ignorance is nothing more than the condition of being uneducated, unaware, or uninformed. In and of itself, it is nothing to be ashamed of as long as one is willing to correct the condition, although it can be painful to have one's ignorance pointed out. Ms. Huckabee has been a voice for those without one. We look to her as a devastatingly specialized advocate in the public arena. We count on her for transparency... We count on her for transparency, and we hold her candid behavior, insistent voice, and tell it like it is way of speaking in high regard. We elected her for just this. We appreciate Ms. Huckabee's ability to see the justice system from both sides. For 15 years, she has been empathetic to the victims of sexual assault and sympathetic to the concerns of law enforcement and prosecutors. She continues to educate on both sides. Her experience and knowledge are, again, unique and invaluable. We are here tonight to show support for Ms. Huckabee in these unusual circumstances. We are mystified by Mr. Morgan's call for her reprimand, as we do not see he has been injured.
Are you close to the end?
Yes.
Okay, go really fast. I'm bending the rules and council will beat me.
He made a statement that reflected ignorance of a relevant fact. Ms. Huckabee being better informed identified the statement as ignorant. It's preposterous to ask that she be reprimanded, whatever that may mean, for doing something we elected her to do. We appreciate you, Ms. Huckabee, for your voice, your intellect, your empathy, strength, candor, and insight. The commitment of Wyoming Women Warriors extends to you, as well as to all other victims and survivors of sexual assault. No woman alone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak to council? Okay. Before we go around the table, I'm going to take the opportunity just to say a couple quick words. Mr. Cogdill spoke about passion, and that is definitely something that we have on this council, is a whole lot of passion. Passion for our community, passion for the people, and passion for each other. I want to apologize to my council and to our community for not being a stronger mayor and a stronger leader, which I think led us to this point. I wish I'd been a little bit stronger to steer us in a way that we would keep our passion exactly in the manner that we need it. This council's a team, we're a family. Everything we say and do as individuals or as a body reflects on us as a team, a family, and a body. No matter what voice or whose voice, it represents all of us. I love every single one of you, and I love being here with you guys. It's an honor. After tonight, I want us to move on as a family, as a team, and to focus on what we were elected to do. So tonight, I'm going to ask everyone on council, be kind to each other, and let's move past this and become the strong family that we need to be for our community. So we'll go around the table, and we'll start with Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This last week, we had an OYD committee meeting over at Montessori School, and talked a little bit about some of the, the parking study that's going to be coming up, and gave everybody in that group an update on what we know about the foots, and told everybody where they could get the information. Also took a quick tour of Center Point Apartments, and nice apartments, they look really good. Planning and zoning last week, we had two relatively minor issues, but on that, a routine meeting, and nice week.
Councilman Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was, as Mr. Steenholz has pointed out, absent from last Tuesday's meeting. I believe it was my first ever, though, so, and keep that tally accurate. I had the opportunity to lead the Adventure World Series racers into town at the time the council work session was going on. And just to give you an idea what that is, so an adventure race encompasses hiking with a backpack, riding on a mountain bike, going down a river in a, in a small kayak, to the extent of about 500 miles from Jackson to Casper. So, last Thursday, this is, this is the culmination of the World Series of adventure racing, and it's finishing in Casper. Tomorrow will be the last day, so it's the first time it's ever been in the North American continent, and we, we get to host it here in our state. They're coming in at Crossroads Park, probably as we speak, and they've been funneling in since Sunday. They started in Jackson, raced over down from there, Pinedale, South Pass, and into Casper. So, I mean, the world's most fantastic athletes are all here. There's over 200 of them from 22 different countries. It's a pretty impressive event, and kind of goes unnoticed, because if you don't watch the world of adventure racing, it's not something that's going to be, that'll catch your eye. That was a fantastic thing. And I didn't catch last week's work session, and I didn't hear, I wasn't directly there for any of the comments or anything like that, but I'm going to throw in my two cents on this. I have a great deal of respect for all the qualities that people at this council bring. Each of us have different strengths, each of us have our own weaknesses. What we see that has exploded into the, into the press, our written press, the social media, is just that, it's, it's a distraction, because it seems the world only wants to hear about these Jerry Springer Show conflicts that are going on. And let me tell you something, I do not want to be on a council where we're all going to sit back and agree with each other, and pat each other on the back, and never make any accomplishments because we're afraid of conflict. This is interpersonal communication, this is how you solve problems. This is not an issue that should have been, you know, we see the Star Tribune, they throw it out there, and that's the hot topic of the day. I'm certain that my fellow councilmen made a lot of real decisions that night that affected the long-term outcomes of the city. But we hear, oh, you know, he's calling her names, and she's calling him names, and they're not even, it's not even an accurate picture. I don't see this as, when I walk into this room, I don't have one single problem, there's no conflict, nobody is attacking me, we're not attacking each other, but there'll come a day when probably I ask Charlie, "Are you sure about that? I've never heard anything like that in my life." And he might point out where I'm wrong. And I'm glad he will. So, the problem isn't as inflated as, as I think it's portrayed. I think social media is a dark pit of attack, and it is worthless. One of these young ladies said, "The social media jury." I would prefer that none of us participated in that at all. What I would like to see is Facebook Live for these meetings, but not for comment back. I want you to be able to see it on your own, on your own time. And as far as sexual assault goes, that is not a crime of, that's not a sexual gratification crime. That is a crime of violence committed by predatory losers in our community. And it is a, a crime of dominance. It is the ultimate form of violence on people, regardless of any circumstances that a person finds them in. That's what that is, just so everybody understands my impression of what sexual assault is. And with that, I assure all of you, I don't have any problem working with this city council or anybody on it. Certainly don't have any problem with being checked on my opinions or my attitudes. So I thank you all, and I think you're doing a great job.
Councilman Powell.
Difficult to follow that. But, but I agree. It does seem that anytime there's any kind of disagreement on council, that's somehow framed as council's dysfunctional. And we've seen that happen over and over again. And we need to disagree with each other, we need to call each other on things, we need to correct each other. That's not a sign of dysfunction, that's, that's why there's nine of us up here. And so I couldn't agree more that somehow we've, we've got to change this, this perception that any kind of disagreement or even a terse exchange somehow means the council isn't working in the best interests of the city. That's exactly what the council is doing when we disagree. And so I appreciate your remarks and yours as well. I guess I'm overdue to say something about all of this. I've, I've studiously avoided putting my professional hat on as I've worked as a member of this council, but having worked with literally hundreds of victims and perpetrators in my career, just let me say a couple of things that I think will seem obvious once they are said, but they are things that are overlooked, and they are actually in defense of Council, Councilwoman Huckabee, I hope you will hear them as a defense. The essence of any, we've all been threatened, we've all experienced different kinds of trauma. Most of us fortunately have not experienced something as severe as sexual assault, but anyone who has been traumatized has certain cues that they look for in the environment that indicate that there is a potential threat of being re-traumatized. It's pretty much how our brains work. That's why the Vietnam vets, after they came back, found themselves hiding, found themselves hiding behind a pillar at a bank when they saw an Asian face. It's, it doesn't, it's not rocket science, it's, it's a protective mechanism. And so anyone, and everyone's trauma is unique, and the cues that, that trigger that fear of re-exposure, which is how we refer to it, are, are, are unique to that person. Can be a smell, a color, expression, facial features, a place. Police officers who've had difficult calls will have a difficult time going to a certain intersection. Those things are, but they're normal warning mechanisms that the brain creates, and it can be a phrase. And when one of those cues is experienced, it creates an anxiety reaction, and in that moment, context and intent tend to fade into the background, and it's a normal reaction. And so, and then, in the area of sexual assault, what we see is that because most sexual assault victims are female, we use demeaning terms like hysterical or drama queen. And when in fact, what you're seeing is a normal reaction to an abnormal set of experiences. And so I, I think we need to be a little more forgiving when those things occur, and, and understand that they are in fact to be expected when people have had these horrendous experiences. So I agree with the mayor's comments that we need to put this to rest as best we can. We also need to be a little, give each other a little room. We're going to slip now and then. I've made countless stupid mistakes as a council member, and, and we need to find a way to get past things and give each other a little room, because for us to deliberate and solve the difficult problems in front of us, we can't be afraid to say something because it might offend someone else, or be misinterpreted, or end up in social media. We need to conduct our business. So Jane, I appreciate all of your remarks. I don't disagree with anything you said, although I believe you misinterpreted Councilman Morgan's intent, as many others have. But at the same time, we need to understand that these things will occur, and we need to get through them. So, and if, if my remarks were offensive to anyone, I apologize, but again, trauma reactions are real, and, and it's unreasonable to expect them to not occur. Thank you.
Have I ever called you Councilwoman Huckabee, or have I always said Councilman Huckabee?
Man.
Thanks for cutting me slack. Dallas is going to school me soon. Councilwoman Huckabee.
Thank you. Thank you both for your comments on that topic. I want to thank the warriors that, that came and spoke in support of me, but I also want to thank you, Lucas, for your comments as well. I did go back and listen to the audio several times from last Tuesday. And in hindsight, I recognized that I was triggered personally with things that had nothing to do with Councilman Morgan whatsoever. And unfortunately, I reacted to him in a negative way based on those triggers exterior to him. And if I could go back and change how I handled that situation, I would, and I would be not as reactive, and I would have chosen different words to get my point across in a different manner. It's true, I have complex PTSD that's caused by things that six different men in my life did to me, and I'm left to deal with for the rest of my life. It's something that I look at, much like diabetes, it's never going to go away, I have to learn to manage it. And sometimes I'm better able to do that than other times. But I'm a human being, just like anybody else. And it occurred to me after listening to those audio recordings that I wanted to share something that I know resonates with me deeply, and I know resonates with the survivor group, and probably every woman in this room. So I'm going to take a little bit of time, and I want to share this. There's this thing that happens whenever I speak about or write about women's issues. I get the comments. Aren't there more important things to worry about? Is this really that big of a deal? Aren't you being overly sensitive? Are you sure that you're being rational about this? Every single time. And every single time I get frustrated, why don't they get it? But I think I've figured out why. They don't know. They don't know about de-escalation and minimizing, quietly acquiescing. Even though women live it, we are not always aware of it, but we have all done it. We have learned either by instinct or by trial and error how to minimize a situation that makes us feel uncomfortable, how to avoid angering a man or endangering ourselves. We have all, on many occasions, ignored an offensive comment. We've all laughed off an inappropriate come-on. We've all swallowed our anger when being belittled or condescended to. It doesn't feel good, it feels icky, it feels dirty. But we do it to not do, because to not do it could put us in danger, or get us fired, or get us labeled the B-word. So, we usually take the path of least precariousness. It's not something that we talk about every day. We don't tell our boyfriends or our husbands and friends every time it happens, because it's so frequent, so pervasive, that it has become something that we just deal with. So maybe they don't know. Maybe they don't know that at a tender age of 11, we had to have men, or we had to brush off adult men staring at our breasts. Maybe they didn't know that men our dad's age actually come on to us while we're working the cash register at a fast food restaurant. They probably don't know that the guy in English class who asks us out sends us angry messages just because we turned him down. They may not be aware that our supervisor regularly pats us on the bottom. And they surely don't know that most of the time we smile with gritted teeth, or that we look away or pretend not to notice. They likely have no idea how often these things happen, that these things have become routine in our everyday lives, so expected that we hardly even notice it anymore as adults. So routine that we go through the motions of ignoring it and minimizing it. Not showing or suppressing anger and fear and frustration. A quick cursory smile or a chipped laugh will allow us to continue with our day. We de-escalate, we minimize it. Both internally and externally, we minimize it. We have to. To not shrug it off would put us in confrontation mode more than often most of us would like to deal with. We learn at a very young age how to do this, but we didn't have a name or a label for it. We didn't even consider that other girls were doing the same thing, but we were teaching ourselves, mastering the art of de-escalation, learning by way of observation and quick risk assessment what our reaction should and should not be. We go through a quick mental checklist. Does he seem volatile or angry? Are there other people around? Does he seem reasonable, and is he just trying to be funny, albeit clueless? Will saying something impact my school, or my job, or my reputation? In a matter of seconds, we determine whether we will say something or let it slide, whether we'll call him out, or turn the other way, smile politely, or pretend that we didn't hear, see, or feel it. It happens all the time. And it's not always clear if the situation is dangerous or benign. It is the boss who says or does something inappropriate, it's the customer who holds our tip out of reach until we lean over to hug him, it's the male friend who has had too much to drink and tries to corner us for a friends-with-benefit moment, even though we've made it clear that we're not interested. It's the guy who gets angry if we turn him down for a date, or a dance, or a drink. We see it happen to our friends, we see it happen in so many scenarios and instances that it becomes the norm, and we really don't think anything of it, until that one time that came close to being a dangerous situation, until we hear that friend who cornered us was accused of rape a day later, until our boss makes good on his promise to kiss us on New Year's Eve when he catches us alone in the kitchen. Those times stick out in our memories. They're the ones we may tell your friends, our boyfriends, our husbands about. But all the other times? All those times, we felt uneasy or nervous, but nothing more happened. Those times, we just go about our business and don't think twice about it. It's the reality of being a woman in our world. It's laughing off sexism because we felt we had no other option. It's feeling sick... It's feeling sick to your stomach that we had to play along to get along. It's feeling shame and regret that we didn't call that guy out, the one who seemed intimidating, but in hindsight, was probably just harmless. Probably. It's taking our phone out, finger poised over the call button when we're walking alone at night. It's positioning our keys between our fingers in case we need a weapon when walking to our car. It's lying and saying that we have a boyfriend just so a guy who wouldn't take no for an answer. It's being at a crowded bar, concert, any crowded event, and having to turn around to look for the jerk who just grabbed our behinds. It's knowing that even if we spot him, we might not say anything. It's walking through the parking lot of a big box store and politely saying hello when a guy passing us says hi. It's pretending not to hear as he berates us for not stopping to talk further, and calling us the B-word. It's carrying a handgun, so that we have a false sense of control over our agencies and our bodies if we are in danger. It's not telling our friends, or our parents, or our husbands, because it's just a matter of fact, a part of our lives. It's the memory that haunts us of the time we were abused, assaulted, or raped. It's the stories our friends tell us through heartbreaking tears of the time they were abused, assaulted, or raped. It's realizing that the dangers we perceive every time we have to choose to confront these situations aren't in our imagination. Because we know too many women who've been abused, assaulted, or raped. It occurred to me recently, that a lot of guys may be unaware of this. They have heard of things that happen, they have probably at times seen it and stepped in to stop it. But they likely have no idea how often it happens, that it colors much of what we say or do, and how we do it. Maybe we need to explain it better. Maybe we need to stop ignoring it ourselves, minimizing it in our own minds. The guys that shrug off, or tune out when a woman talks about sexism in our culture, they're not bad guys. They just haven't lived our reality. And we don't really talk about the everyday stuff that we witness and experience. So how could they possibly know? So maybe the good men in our lives have no idea that we deal with this stuff on a regular basis. Maybe it is so much our norm that it didn't occur to us that we would have to tell them. It occurred to me that they don't know the scope of it, and they don't always understand that that is our reality. So yeah, when I get fired up about a comment someone makes about a girl's tight dress, they don't always get it. When I get worked up over the everyday sexism I'm seeing, and witnessing, and watching, when I'm hearing of the things my daughter and her friends are experiencing, they don't realize it's the tiny tip of a much bigger iceberg. When I hear that we have an over-consumption problem, rather than a sexual assault problem, I get upset. Maybe I'm realizing that men can't be expected to understand how pervasive everyday sexism is, if we don't start telling them, and pointing it out to them when it happens. Maybe I'm starting to realize that men have no idea that even walking into a store, we have to be on guard. We have to be aware, subconsciously, of our surroundings, and any perceived threats. Maybe I'm starting to realize that just shrugging it off and not making a big deal about it is not gonna help anyone. We de-escalate. We are acutely aware of our vulnerability. Aware that if he wanted to, that guy in Home Depot parking lot could overpower us, and do what he wants to us. We are sexualized before we even understand what that means. We develop into women while our minds are still innocent. We get stares and comments before we can even drive, from adult men. We feel uncomfortable, but don't know what to do, so we go about our lives. We learn at an early age that to confront every single situation that makes us squirm is to possibly put ourselves in danger. We are aware that we are the smaller, physically weaker sex. That boys and men are capable of overpowering us if they choose to. So we minimize, and we de-escalate. So the next time a woman talks about being catcalled, and how it makes her uncomfortable, don't dismiss her. Listen. The next time your wife complains about being called sweetheart at work, don't shrug it off in apathy. Listen. The next time you read about, or hear a woman call out sexist language, don't belittle her for doing so. Listen. The next time your girlfriend tells you that the way a guy talked to her made her feel uncomfortable, don't shrug it off. Listen. Listen because your reality is not the same as ours. Listen because our concerns are valid, and not exaggerated, or inflated. Listen because the reality is that we, or someone you know personally, has at some point been abused, assaulted, or raped. And she knows that it's always a danger of happening to her. Listen because even a simple comment from a strange man can send ripples of fear through her. Listen because she may be trying to make her experience not like the experience for her daughter. Listen because nothing bad can ever come from listening.
I think Councilwoman Huckabee brought up some really interesting points, and I wanna actually talk about it for just a minute, because I don't, council knows some of the things that I get on my cellphone as the mayor, but let me play you a message that, let's face it, it freaked me out.
Kenee, you have lovely legs. Oh my gosh. You have sunglasses, that's awesome. Stay cool. Love you. Bye.
The first part that you can't probably hear is, Kenee, you have lovely legs. I don't know who this guy is. So what did I do? I changed my Facebook status to make it look like I had a boyfriend. Thought maybe it would make me feel a little bit safer. My gun's in my car. I can't tell you how many pictures of male anatomy I've had texted to me anonymously. So, Councilwoman Huckabee's right. We get some dirty stuff as women. I do wanna say that there are some amazing men out there, and I appreciate every single man out there that respects us as women. But you just summarized a whole lot of stuff that I didn't realize that I did. So thank you for making me a little bit more aware. Councilwoman Laird.
I'm really happy to see a lot of citizens here tonight, more than we normally get. I appreciate it. I appreciate you coming here, and talking to us, because we need to hear your voices. They don't know this yet, but this is my tribe. And I, I'm suggesting they all read this book called Tribes. Because you all, you all have a tribe. A tribe appeared today. And so, tribes argue, or tribes fight, they do different things, and, um, they have conversations, they love each other, and, and at some point, they may get like a SEAL team. That can really do damage, you know? I saw a little bit of a SEAL team with these ladies today. And, uh, you know, I've gotten to know all these folks. I've been here, they, they chose me. I think sometimes they, some of them may have regretted choosing me. And I'm hoping that I make, I, I end up where they think they are happy they chose me, at some point. And I have a great deal of respect for all of them. I've argued with all of them. I've disagreed with all of them. I just can't understand why they won't accept what I say, but we keep going. And, um, I was there. I was at the meeting. And, um, I admire Jesse Morgan. Uh, I think he grew up in North Casper, that's where I grew up. And I know he didn't have it easy either. And I don't think he had hurt anybody. I think he's a warrior. I told him on him to go to law school. I've told Amanda, I'd like to see her go to, to law school. To defend women. And for him to defend people who are underprivileged. Because they both understand how that is. I don't think anybody needs reprimanded. I think, I, I'm one of these jugglers. I have to juggle the First Amendment. What they both said was within the First Amendment, in my opinion. The freedom of speech. Um, I think that, uh, I'm glad Dr. Powell spoke about post-traumatic stress disorder, because I saw that that night. One of my first cases as a young man was a, was a, uh, an old friend of mine who shot up a place, went crazy, and they wanted to put him in the pen. And he's a lovely man. I couldn't understand why he did this, until I started talking to him. And he told me about Vietnam, and a battle he was in, and what he saw. If he heard a loud pipe or a motorcycle, he, he would find himself trembling with a gun. Thought he was being attacked. And there was a low, there's a local, uh, a local psychologist who started doing research on post-traumatic stress disorder. They used to call it shell shock. These guys would come back and go crazy, and nobody knew why they were going crazy. But I can't think of anything more horrible than a woman being sexually assaulted. And what that does to her psyche. And how does she protect herself? And, um, and how that can all be brought back, just by a statement that was made, which was an innocent statement, that really, in my opinion, had nothing to do with demeaning women, or sexual assault at all. I, I heard it, I was right there between them. And I, I saw the pain in Amanda's face. And I saw the shock in Jesse's face, which you can't see that on TV. You can't read about that on Facebook. And so I, I've thought a lot about what, you know, what, what should be done. And I think, I hope my tribe, I hope what they do, I hope it's like, I went to a heavyweight fight one time. And they, these two guys just beat each other up, because it was for the championship of the world down in Las Vegas. And at the end of the fight, at that time, uh, the two combatants finished, and they came out in the center of the ring, and they shook hands, and they hugged each other. They've said that it's one of the greatest fights of all time. But the two combatants became really good friends. I think that's what's gonna happen here. Between them, they're pretty powerful young people. You know, I look down, when I look down as council, uh, six of these council members are younger than my children. And, uh, I think Bob, I used to think he was older than me, but I think I got him by a couple of months. So, uh, we have a good council, and we do get a lot of work done. There's a lot of things that, that we do that goes unseen, that you know, you don't hear about, or see. The things that we deal with. And we get, we do, we get paid the big money. We get a hundred and fifty dollars a session. And I think, I might have cleared five hundred and fifty-nine dollars, so I was well-paid. I, I, I believe that. I didn't, I don't think anybody's sitting here for their check. And I've heard people talk about how much we supposedly make, and they're all misinformed. And, uh, so, you know, I'm, I wanna protect my tribe, because I think it's a good one. My bigger tribe, though, is Casper, Wyoming. I was born and raised here, like some of them were. And I love the people of Casper, Wyoming. And I don't mind it when they tell me I'm doing something wrong, and I need to go take a look in the mirror. Or when they tell me, "Good job." Because I, 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 I think, like the rest of the members of my tribe, they wanna improve. They want a good city. They wanna do what's right. We hired a great city manager. You're gonna love him. He's gonna make an announcement sometime here in the next month or so, it's gonna make me really happy.
It's okay, I'll smack him for you later.
Maybe he's got a little Scotchman in him after all, you know? I was raised by a Scottish grandfather, says, "Don't ever spend that, that savings account." My grandmother said, "Save it for a rainy day." And I'd say, "Well, is it time to spend that money?" She says, "It's not raining hard enough." So, um, I see all these folks. Here's a warrior right here. He's in the Wyoming National Guard. I see a spiritual man over here in a black shirt, um, who's the vice mayor. I, I think we have a great mayor. And I, I know how she's, how she's, she's, some things people have said to her, and have said to me about her. Which I thought, you know, you don't know her, how could you say these kinds of things? We have an ex-police chief who's tougher than tough. And he understands the issues. And I think if he caught anybody assaulting a woman, the guy wouldn't need a trial. Literally, I wouldn't, I, I don't think he would. So, I'm proud to be on this council. Because of the people of the city of Casper. And we're gonna work hard for you. And we're gonna try to spend your money wisely. We are gonna spend your money wisely. The manager's gonna marry, hire a great police chief, and a great, uh, fire chief, hopefully, soon. And, um, I can only say to Amanda and, um, Jesse, that I love both of you, I really do. And I'm hoping this thing's over with, and, and I, and I'm so happy about what Charlie Powell said, because he's the expert in that area of post-traumatic stress disorder. And so, please forgive us. But we're gonna stumble occasionally, we're gonna make a few mistakes, we have our flaws. But I think God is gonna give us the power to do a good job for this city.
Councilman Johnson.
Uh, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but there's a couple of things I wanna touch on. I do think this is a misunderstanding. I think Charlie hit the nail right on the head with his description of what happened. I don't think Jesse meant any ill will. He's a great person. He's smart. He's dedicated. Amanda's passionate, very smart, and dedicated. And I'm confident that they're going to, they're gonna fix this, and we'll be fine. But the one thing I did wanna touch on, um, something that Dallas said, and it has to do with the First Amendment. This is where the libertarian enemy comes out. I, I don't know if Jesse was serious about pursuing a, a formal reprimand or not, but it is something that I would never, ever support, a center or a reprimand by any council member, ever. The First Amendment is vital, especially in politics. It is guaranteed to us in the Constitution. In 2014, this council passed a series of ordinances that, to me, are very dangerous, and threatening to the First Amendment of council members. Jesse used some of those in his letter. Things like, "You must not be an embarrassment to the city," whatever that may be. "Your conduct must be above reproach." No definition on what that means. So literally, you could use those things to try to censor or silence somebody. There's nine of us up here that represent the entirety of this city. So, to me, it's even more important that we are allowed to have disagreements, to be passionate. If your feelings get hurt, then maybe politics isn't for you. Every single person in this country has a right to freedom of speech, everybody. Whether you like what they say or not. Whether they're the Nazi pigs over on the East Coast saying their crap that's been going on. Whether you like it or not, they have, they have the right to say that. They have the right to say what they want to. And, um, I'm of the, the school that, you know, I, I, I've served in the military, and I take my oath to the Constitution very seriously. And, as much, even if, even if you say something to me that I disagree with, or that may hurt my feelings, I will always defend your right to say it, always. So, I hope that that's not Jesse's intent. So, I hope that that's not Jesse's intent and I hope that we can, as a council, go back and look at those rules and, and just completely get rid of them. The only way that any council member should remove another council member is if there is a felony conviction by one of us. That is it. So, that's all I have to say.
Councilman Morgan.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't get a chance to speak to Councilman Johnson or, um, Councilman Hopkins, but I, I wanted to let everybody know that I did make an effort to speak to everyone else, um, even you guys, that I wasn't going to pursue the whole censure or reprimand. I, I spoke to Amanda. She and I have been working it out. We understand our differences. The original intent that I had of sending that letter out is that I see these meetings and I see and hear what other people are saying about this governing body and it's disheartening when it's put on social, social media. It was meant for these nine members up here. That was the intent of the letter, for us to work through it. And I wanted to make it a point as to why I felt that way. It's been a number of issues and with school coming up, I don't think profanity should be used when we're up here in a public meeting. I'd like the student body to be participating in these meetings. I don't want them to get offensive or think that that's the norm of how they should conduct their manners. I know we see it on a national level and how things are done with our president, but that doesn't mean we have to stoop to that level. So it's unfortunate when I saw that letter reach social media because it blew up from there and it blew up by terrible comments. We even heard other comments made of tying somehow alcohol to rape and that's not what I, I said or, and that's not what I intended. So I'll, I'll talk about some of the comments that were made tonight. My intent and message, um, and why I even said sexual assault, I don't, I'm eight months into this. I don't deal with police officers, at least formally, I guess. So to hear a police chief, a DA, and then other reputable members of our community that work directly with bad guys, I don't deal with bad guys. My friends aren't felons. We don't drink and drive and have a number of DUIs or anything like that. So to hear them talk about the issue of overconsumption, the issue of people getting over-served, that's just one area that I was hoping that I could possibly have an effect on. I'm not a police officer. I'm not able to go out and investigate or, or just arrest a bad guy. That's not my role. I, I wish it was. Sorry, I don't have the Superman cape. So when I brought that up, the intent of bringing that up was just to improve not only relations with police officers, but also try to let people know, hey, you've had a lot to drink. Your decisions, and if you continue on this path, aren't going to probably be good ones. Unfortunately, the only time that we actually have a breathalyzer is when something bad has occurred. And I'm just trying to be preventative in that area. That's why I, I reference that is because I'm hearing from a, a chief of police talking about, uh, all, all the issues with consumption even, I think talked about, uh, when he went to college and his hockey buddies were bragging about drinking a six-pack. He referenced, you know, we drink a case of beer, you know, that's nothing, seriously? So that, you know, that's kinda the, the, the idea that I had and that's why I was trying to just bring that to our, the attention of the, of the public. Uh, there was another thing that came up and again, just to stress that I never brought up rape and it's really frustrating that I continue to hear that even tonight. I never brought up rape and alcohol and I never tried to tie both of those together where I was coming from because that's where I heard from professionals talking about overconsumption and what I'd like the city, uh, to do about it. And that was just an educational piece, hopefully. So I hope you understand where I was coming from. It's unfortunate that my efforts and, and time has to be spent, um, defending myself. It's also unfortunate that I have to receive a phone call from my wife because she just read all of these terrible comments online about, about how I support rape. And it's, it's really frustrating, um, to hear and to see that sort of thing. And it, and again, it doesn't help when it's on social media. It's completely counterproductive. I understand that what we send is, is, uh, public, but that doesn't mean it should happen and it shouldn't take place. So I just hope that we can work together, uh, in terms of communicating to one another and not really have issues brought to the city. I would like solutions brought to the city. And then another role that I see this council is, is just giving confidence in our local government that's also in our, our city, that they know that we're doing the best that we can, um, and we're up here for all the right reasons. And I'd like to thank other people for, uh, I guess having my back when I didn't even ask them to. They were putting themselves out there and I, I appreciate you, um, just your, your calls, emails, texts of support. It certainly helped me sleep a little bit better at night. And, um, now I'd like to move on to some items, uh, that isn't just for this topic because there's a whole list of issues that I normally talk about at the end of meetings that we, is in regards to, uh, things that I hear throughout the city. And going to Councilman Laird speaking about a lot of things that you don't see or you don't, don't often hear about. Tonight, we accepted a grant for over eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to help our water system with the booster. And I'd like to thank previous council members and staff last year that actually put that out there for us to actually accept that grant this year. So thank you. Also, again, uh, I just missed that, Dallas, um, I did live in North Casper, but that was actually just for a short time. I lived in over ten homes, I believe, including hotels and trailers. It'd be great to be a lawyer. I think that time's passed, though.
Maybe not.
So, yeah, another thing, item, uh, last Friday, uh, city staff and I and Councilman Powell, we attended a downtown parking study. We've kinda finalized and hammered out the RFP that we're putting out there. Hopefully that'll be completed in a timely fashion. Also, sorry, bit flustered here. Tonight, we also approved the lease agreement with the Casper Coyotes. Um, I'm happy to have a dedicated base of fans. I look forward to seeing that fan base grow. Another detail in that agreement that I also appreciate is that we're also putting that if alcohol is catered at that event, that those caterers have tips training and I appreciate that. Last weekend, I visited Billings. I also had the opportunity to speak to Downtown Billings, um, Alliance and I wanted to, to see how they were able to have Montana Brewing and then there's another bar actually across the street that has a bump out and then a sidewalk area, something that business owners are really trying to pursue in our downtown. It'd be great to see that. In the city of Casper, when I, when I said that unfortunately, council didn't have the majority of votes, they were shocked when it passed unanimously, uh, with their councils. So I hope to kinda educate this body, maybe at the next work session with what their downtown and councilmen have dealt with and what they saw as, I guess, wins as opposed to a permanent. They actually have temporary structures made of wood. It, it looks fantastic. It's only there from Memorial Weekend to Labor Day Weekend and it's a great idea. And it's something I think I could see us having in our downtown. Currently, I do have a, a Facebook, um, ad out there, so I haven't, I'm not sure if you've seen it, but I've reached five hundred likes on my Facebook. I'm really happy about it. As you may know, I do give my stipend to nonprofit organizations here in town. And if you happen to see it, you like my page and then you vote for a particular organization, I'll give five hundred dollars to that organization. There's a few, um, people or businesses out there that have also stepped up and gave an additional hundred dollars. That's eighteen ninety, uh, Pick and Stitch or, and Apparel and also Three Oh Seven House Hunter. So I appreciate those businesses also contributing to whoever that, uh, lucky organization is that gives so much back to our community. There's also the event that I normally do is a coffee with the councilman every month with their listening sessions where anybody can come to me and, and voice their opinion on something or say, "Hey, this needs addressed in our city." I'm more than happy to field those questions and, and bring those to this governing body. I do every work session and I'm happy to do so. I never know what to expect, especially when you see town halls across the country that go awry. But like I get, like I say, I, I'm happy to put myself out there and I'm happy to hear from you. The next event is going to be breakfast with, um, your councilmen, so that'll be at the Nineteenth Annual Awards and Recognition Breakfast with the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, I have two spots left for our table of eight. I am also offering, if you can't afford it, but you'd still like to go, I'll pay that hundred-and-twenty-five dollars because what I'm expecting is every participant, uh, to have a seat at the table, you put a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars out there. So, uh, Councilman Morgan and friends ultimately donate a thousand dollars to the Boys and Girls Club. Happy to support the Rotary Club with the Duck Derby. I'm a Lucky Duck, uh, sponsor, so I hope you're able to make it. And with that, um, that's all I have. I just hope that everybody has fun this weekend. Uh, you take advantage of some of the events that's taking place. It's going to be awesome. So stay safe and enjoy this opportunity.
We also had a question, the audience, about our conversation about breathalyzers and kind of doing it as a community service. Do you wanna describe your idea a little bit about that, just to answer that question?
Yeah, sure. I don't know if there's any other ones I missed. Oh, Mr. Steens, I'm glad your legs are getting better, Mr. Steensland. Um, yeah, so anyways, with, so what I'd like to see with, if it's an overconsumption issue or whatever the case is, if we can work with, with bar owners, I heard the last time it was tried, it wasn't well-received from bar owners or patrons, but to be honest, I wouldn't really feel comfortable if a police guy just said, "Hey, blowing this." And like, what's going on here? So I guess my idea is just putting a, a campaign or an educational piece out there of, "Hey, this is where we're gonna be. It's Sunday Night Football. It's Thursday Night Football. I got Saturday in my brain with the first home preseason game for the Packers." Anyways, um, putting an ad out there, this is where the police officers are going to be, um, at any particular event or establishment that'll have us. If you wanna know what your BAC is, this is an opportunity to, to do it. I'm going to meet with the liquor division next month. This month's been canceled due to the eclipse. So I'm going to meet with them, um, next month. And like I said, if we can't work it out with the city in terms of giving breathalyzers, um, I'm going to try it with a, uh, some nonprofit organizations that are here in town and local bar owners to see if they'd be willing to have that, um, in their bar establishment. There are devices where they can have the device and then all you have to do is download an app and then the person blowing into that receives that. So it kinda takes liability away from the bar owner and it, again, lets people know where they're at, where am I at? There's a huge campaign going on that we had for our state funding for police officers to be out in force to give DUIs out there. And it's really, you know, going away from that preventative measure. They're giving a breathalyzer at the end of it. Well, you just, you know, that person made that choice, unfortunately, that might ruin their life, but we're also ruining their life by pulling them over. It's, it's not a win-win. So I'd like to just focus on preventative measures. Like I said in the meeting, I'm sorry, uh, that it was, it was received that way. I'll say it again, I'm happy to, because that wasn't my intent and that's not what I support. I think we all want the same thing, to be honest. I just am unsure of, of what my specific role is in trying to, to fix that and correct that. I have told my family and friends some, some terrible statistics that I did hear at some of those sexual assault panels. And I have made it a point to stand with victims and be right there in the crowd to try to learn more about it. I think as an elected official, I, I have to and that's why I attended every sexual assault panel. I tried to go to the restorative justice, uh, training or the informative thing that they gave at the event center, sorry. But I tried to go to that, but I couldn't get the time off for it. Anyways, I'm, I'm trying to make a difference here. I'm trying to do what's best for our community and for my constituents. So it's kinda frustrating when things kinda get, uh, skewed, but I'm doing the best I can, the best I know how, and I'm trying to learn more about how we can make an impact in everyone's lives.
Okay.
I got off topic.
Nope, you're fine. Councilman Pacheco.
Just a couple of things and, uh, it's already getting late, so I'll just have, have a couple of comments on this topic. When I got involved into politics, um, many years ago, uh, helping my, uh, father out and being a part of Tom Struck's, um, uh, being taught by Tom Struck about politics and campaigning, um, did not prepare me also of how mean-hearted politics is and how quickly, um, things spread. I experienced that when I ran for the state legislature last year of some very, um, very vile things that were spread about me that were lies. Where they came from, I don't know. I don't care. But it became, um, a part of me where I began thinking, "I don't wanna be a part of politics anymore or government," because you try to put yourself out there to help community to do those things. And then when you have, you know, uh, people, um, saying things about you and they don't even know who you are in your heart. They don't know the type of a person you are, your spirit, your soul, um, your family. They know nothing about you. The people that have spread things about you may say things, um, without even having a conversation or shaking your hand. Social media is, can be very awesome. It can be a great way to communicate. But I also agree with Councilman Walsh that it has also become, um, a very, um, stain upon how we communicate. It can be, the things that can be said on there about people, both about, um, sexual assault victims, um, things that were said about Councilman Morgan, um, things that, uh, I, I could not believe that were being said, um, caught me completely off guard after I listened to the comment, um, or the recording. And I just kind of tumbled after that. We're really a blip here on this council and we're gonna be forgotten in about twenty years. So the time that we have on here, um, is vital and it's important. We're called to very high standards. Uh, we're not always gonna do it. We're gonna make mistakes. But those standards I take important because every time that I go back to, um, because right now I know my kids and my wife are watching me. Because when I go back, I know the words that come out of my mouth. I want those words to be something that I can look at my kids in the face and I can say to them, "I did everything that I possibly could." And that standard means decorum. It also means how we argue, that we can understand each other on both sides, the left, the right, the middle. And frankly, we've forgotten the middle and I'm not afraid to say that anymore because we're so interested on trying to figure out what is right and what is wrong, that we've forgotten about what's common good for all of us and what we can do to work together to make good things happen. And we really have forgotten that. My hope is, is that this council will continue to work well together, because I think we do. We disagree. We always don't see eye to eye and there will be things, there'll be times when we get mad at each other. We'll say things to each other. There's been times where you have it all out in an executive session and it happens. But you wanna walk away and be friends and know and respect each other that you would have their back. And that's my hope. My hope is that in the next year and a half or so of the last of my term, is that we can try to do some good things for this community. Whether that be the passion of, of how do we combat sexual assault violence and domestic violence in this community or youth or the police, the fire, infrastructure, all those things that we can come together to do that. I would hope that we try to be and reserve ourselves on social media. Try to reserve ourselves, to be more reserved on social media and how we can do that, because I, I think it's a great tool, but also it doesn't always end well. I just wanted to make sure that I, I understand where Jesse was coming from. Um, I know, um, the, the struggle, um, and some of the issues that he was facing with that, because I think Jesse's a good human being and I think he really got, got busted in the chops. And I think his family suffered for that. But I also know that I've known Amanda a very long time and I also know Amanda's, um, very passionate. And I also know that with Amanda comes, she's gonna tell you exactly what she thinks. And that's how she's always been. And to learn and to know that, um, that's also about accepting people and meeting them where they're at. But I hope we can move forward and I hope that we can support each other and we can disagree, but we can walk away friends. Tasha. I didn't forget.
[laughing].
No, I didn't. So, so the honest truth was a couple of things. One, so they have that Domestic Violence Task Force over, that they host, that CWCC. So that was, one of the things that they have and the self- So, that was one of the things that they have, and the Self-Help Center sits on that. So, a couple of things that happened, one, they have those things, and I've had that conversation with them, where they said, "We don't want to duplicate services." Two, the other honest-to-goodness question or answer to it was, it really got lost in the turmoil that we had in the last several months, that I really, with what happened with the police chief and everything else that happened, that's really what happened. And I lost sight of that, too. And I became angry in the process and where we went and everything else, and it became a very difficult situation, and I dropped the ball on that. And I know Amanda was really kind of leading the charge for you guys, and there's a part of me that didn't want to step on her toes also. So, really, kind of the three approach, really, why that ball got dropped when it came to that.
So, we won't forget that topic. I think we need to get some staffing in place so that we can move forward with some opportunities with whoever takes that position. And I think the council as a body is looking forward to the opportunity to make some good changes for all of you ladies, so don't give up on us, we're still here, we won't give up, we'll keep fighting. I think the Facebook point is a really great point. So, I would propose that on September 6th, we do a Facebook blackout. And I think that we should ask our entire community to not use Facebook for one day, just see what it's like. We used to live without Facebook, I think we can do it again. Okay, well, obviously, there's some generational issues going on over here, but... So, I'm gonna keep harping on that, September 6th, I'm not touching Facebook. I think there's better ways to do things and better ways to communicate, and Facebook is a really easy place to attack anybody and everybody, because you're not held accountable for what you say. So, if there's something that somebody wants to say to me, I wish they'd say it to my face and not some kind of craziness on Facebook. I wrote way too many notes, too. Reminders for my team and family up here. I did the Planet Fitness Grand Opening at 3:00 this afternoon, looks like a lovely place. I did an interview with the Denver Post about the Eclipse at 3:30. 7:00 AM Mayor Commissioner tomorrow morning. 8:45, I welcome AstroCon at the Parkway Plaza tomorrow morning. State of the Nation with Enzi and Chaney at 11:30. Community Health has an open house Wednesday at 3:00 in the afternoon. 5:30 tomorrow night, David Street Station Grand Ceremony. Another event, David Street Station for, where the convention center on a Wilcox-type event, K2 Radio Friday, 7:00 in the morning. Eclipse Gala, 7:00 PM Saturday night. I don't know where else I'm going, but hopefully, somebody will keep track of me, because I am gonna lose my mind. So, there's all of our events that I have on the calendar so far, if you want to join me. The next meetings of the City Council will be a work session to be, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Johnson, go ahead.
Let's add one more thing. So, as part of my job in the Army, I'm a combat medic, and so they send us to a trauma conference every year to get credits. And so, on the topic of sexual assault, one of the keynote speakers was a gal who was sold into the sex trafficking ring by her parents. Her parents sold her when she was, I think, six years old in Canada, in a town that was less than 1,000 people. She was selling, being sold into the sex trafficking thing, and then from there, was sold to another man who then, it just became this chain reaction, was ended up being sold in the United States. She ended up escaping and was recaught up back in the whole thing in Canada and was resold again and escaped again. Anyway, my point to this is that she now is, she's married with kids, and she does trainings, and she trains police departments and other government agencies on how to identify sex trafficking victims and how you can help those people. So, I have her information, and I'll give to you or whoever's interested, and maybe we can implement that as far as training for the police department on that aspect.
I appreciate that, because I think we have learned over the last several years that sex trafficking is a problem in Casper, we didn't luck out and avoid that. And I'm sorry, the Vice Mayor and I are laughing, because if you open up your Eclipse guide, my ugly mug is on the first page, it's kind of embarrassing. Okay, the next meetings of the City Council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 PM Tuesday, August 22nd, 2017, in the council's meeting room, and a regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 PM September, I'm sorry, September 5th, 2017, in the council chambers. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss personnel, and we will reconvene to adjourn the regular session.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Morgan, seconded by Councilman Walsh, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Thank you, we are adjourned.
Thank you for coming, everybody.